Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting in order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Laura, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Here.
Seaberson?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Samurai?
Palmer?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda itself. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Lauren? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, July 4th, Thursday, the district will be closed. August 13th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, there will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. August 20th, at 5:30 PM, there'll be a school board work session. August 27th, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. And September 3rd, which is a Tuesday, will be the first day of school for the students. Next up would be correspondence. Dawn, is there any correspondence tonight? There is no correspondence tonight, thank you. Communications to the Board, citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Any blue sheets? No. Okay, we'll keep going. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report. I'd be looking for a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Second by Natty. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Next up would be acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I'll ask for a motion in a second, and then I'll read the resolution and then open it up to discussion. So, motion?
So moved.
Holla? Thank you.
Second.
Lauren? Thank you. Okay, and it reads as follows. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, bequest donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved that by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $37,191. And that detailed background is, a donation of $146 was made to Valley View by Carissa Gang for Student Needs. A donation of $190.50 was made to Valley View by Your Cause LLC, trustee for Student Needs. A donation of $144 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Community United Methodist Church for Eat Up the Debt Campaign. A donation of $1,000 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Target Youth Soccer Grant Program for Boys and Girls Soccer Teams. Donation of $1,525 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by the Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the Girls Tennis Team. A donation of $2,409 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the Boys Basketball Team. A donation of $349.99 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for Highland FIAED Department. A donation of $3,500 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for Baseball Team. Donation of $700 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the Boys Swim Team. Donation of $900 was made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the Softball Team. Donation of $2,750 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for Track and Field. Donation of $750 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for Football Team. Donation of $4,000 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the New York Studies Seminar. Donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by the Columbia Heights Boosters Club for the Class of 2020. A donation of $300 was made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Boosters Club for Synchro Swim Team. Donation of $15,215 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Columbia Heights Music Boosters for the New York Studies Seminar. A donation of $311.64 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Community Grounds for High School Drama Club. And a donation of $100 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Janet and John Filter for the New York Studies Seminar. Value and Kind, a donation of UNICEF Power Bands to Valley View Elementary by DonorsChoose.org for Ms. Nelson's class. Estimated value, $899.99. Total fiscal 2018-2019 monetary contributions to date, $177,586.20. Comments? Discussion?
Wow. Some very active and very generous people and groups in the community, so thanks.
I think a huge thank you to the Columbia Heights Booster Club, just supporting our kids from the Studies Seminar to athletics, to activities, to Highland FIAED. It means just an incredible show of support. And to all of those people in the community that participate in events that allow the boosters to raise money. I think we just appreciate that so much.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, this is a resolution, so we need a roll call for approval to accept the contributions.
Mueller?
Aye.
Seaberson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you to everyone that contributed. Next up would be reports of members of the Board. Board members will report on Board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Education. Lauren, do you mind going first?
Oh, sure. Short list today. Since our last meeting, I participated in our work session where we went over the Board self-evaluation, and that's it for me.
Good. Natty?
Also, at the work session for the self-evaluation, I thought it was a really good process. We got home and said that was really effective, so I was glad we did it. I've also had meetings with Superintendent Kelly and John, and some chair meetings, and different conversations with community members.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
I also attended the work session, and I think it's really good for us to do this evaluation. I learned a lot of stuff, and I think that we definitely have some areas that I think we're aware that we need to work on as well. And I also had a lovely conversation with Hala yesterday. Thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you, Holla.
All right, so yeah, I always also attended the Board Self-Assessment, Self-Evaluation, and yeah, like everyone else has said, it was extremely valuable. I went home and I was like, that was like the most amazing, most useful meeting ever, you know, and my husband was like, whoa. And I appreciated the conversation with you yesterday.
Good. Holla, you're Molly.
I am Molly. Hi.
You try to sit in Holla's chair a little bit. Molly.
Okay. I also attended the work session and appreciated the Board Self-Evaluation, like everyone else said, and then I had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yep, and work session for me, and I concur with everything that everybody said, I thought it was very productive and valuable, so. And that concludes my report. So, we will keep moving. Next up would be the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. Everything's got lots of words tonight.
I'm excited to present the certificate of excellence that we received from ASBO, which is Association of School Business Officials International, and this is the 12th year that Columbia Heights Public Schools has earned this award. So, we submit our CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Report, to ASBO, and they review it and give us back comments, so it's your, the district's 12th year of getting this. So, I think I gave the certificate to John. We're waiting for the hard plaque to come, but...
I was told that. We're still going to get a picture of this, but we did receive a certificate, and we're 68 weeks on the plaque here, so I'll just read this real quick. The Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented to Columbia Heights Public Schools for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFR, for the fiscal year end June 30th, 2018. The CAFR meets the criteria established for ASBO International Certificate of Excellence, so. And I think that before we have you come up, I certainly think the kudos goes to our finance department for all of your hard work that you do to make sure, because this is something that's, I won't say expected, but it's not, it's not, it's exciting but not a surprise, because you guys do a really nice job keeping things on track there, so.
Yeah, it's definitely the department, so thank you, and the whole district, so.
Okay. Well, if you want to come up, we've got a picture of this, and then we'll make you come back when we get the plaque, maybe. Denise didn't seem too excited when I told her to come back the picture with the woman who gets the plaques. She goes, "You're serious?" I don't know, I just made that up, so. Congratulations, that is exciting. Thank you. Next up would be the department update for Finance and Operations.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the Board. I'm here tonight, and my two colleagues are going to come up to do my first ever department update for Finance and Operations. And of course, I have a PowerPoint that Mike put on here for me. This is our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the core values that we're going to highlight tonight are excellence, integrity, and innovation. So, the finance department is made up of three departments now. It's finance, so it's, that's accounting, payroll, accounts payable, and all the finance operations. We do some insurance stuff with the contracts, do a lot of contract work. We also have the Food Service Department, which as you know was outsourced, and now we're bringing back in, and Transportation. So, for our finance update, Paula Steele is here. She's our new controller, and she came to us from Forest Lake Schools and has been here since...
Three months today. Going by fast. It's, uh, some days it seems like it should be, I've been here a year, because it's, everybody's made me feel so comfortable, and I've just really enjoyed the camaraderie with the staff. And at Forest Lake, we also had gone through a conversion, the same conversion of going from Ties to E-Finance Plus as well, and it's been very impressive to see how well the different departments have worked together to make this conversion happen and stuff, so I'm excited to help finish out the year and get, get us through audit and stuff and have a full year of conversion under our belt and stuff, and it's been very impressive.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So Paula has been invaluable in helping us, because we implemented E-Finance Plus July 1st of 2018, so this is our first year-end close on it. So whenever anything goes wrong, we all run into Paula's office and ask her what to do. But, you know, because of leaving Ties, and then Ties was discontinuing a bunch of their old systems, that's why we chose E-Finance Plus, but we also have had multiple conversions. It was just the year of conversion, so we added Affinity Plus, which is for Activities Program. Also, WordWare takes Food Service Payments, and ePayTrack also Jake uses to do concessions. So, learning how to navigate all those systems and record them and balance them with the bank balance, that's been, it's been a, it's been an exciting year, a changing year. So, in finance, pretty much the whole department, we're working on year-end now, so we're, you know, three days left in the year. So, June 30th is our year-end, and yes, we work in the summer. Whenever somebody hears that we work in the school district, they, "Oh, do you have summers off?" So, no, it's really one of our busiest times, actually. And so, we're in year-end, so we're closing out 2018-19, and we're lowering now the budget that you approved in May for 2019-2020, which is hard to say. And we're also going to be starting to work on the 2021 levy. So when you, people ask us questions, especially Paula and I were like, "What year are you in?" Because we're always, we're always in three years, pretty much. So, that's our update. All the staff up there is working hard on all years. You know, Kelsey's trying to get the payments in the right year, and then the auditors will come in and check us to see that we did that right, so. We're pretty good at that. So that's the finance department. And then we have our Food Service Department update, and this is our new Food Service Manager, Maggie Maggio, and she started June 17th.
Seven days ago, so.
Yep.
Yeah, so this was my seventh day of work today, so it's been great. It's a big challenge. We're taking over self-op July 1st, so, you know, starting June 17th and then making the transition to start running a program two weeks later is a challenge. You know, as you all know, you have to bid food and get different things, so we've reached out to other districts for help, and it's worked really well, so we will have food to feed the kids from our own program on July 1st. And I'm just, you know, I've met people, I've kind of been in my hole doing work to get everything done, but I'm excited to get to know everyone and work with the staff in the buildings to feed kids and hopefully, you know, give them food they like, let them try some new flavors, and, you know, really support everyone who's trying to teach them by having kids, you know, have food in their bellies and so they can learn and behave and do well in school.
Yep, and then the new thing that you're going to do with breakfast, this is our new, this is our announcement, but Kristen's going to do a rollout for you, too. We're going to serve breakfast free for all students pre-K through 12 next year, so that'll start in September. And it's a trial, you said a trial?
Yeah, so we're going to do a trial for a year with the higher free and reduced rate. We're able to supplement as long as participation increases, so we're hoping to get the word out to students and families to let them know that this is here and that they can eat breakfast in school and, you know, have that good start to their morning to really do well in school, and I think it'll be really successful and hopefully a good opportunity for kids to get a little more food.
Yeah, Maggie came to us from a neighboring district, we won't say friendly, and so they had free breakfast there. So, we also put the free and reduced meals application, so it gets mailed out to everyone in the district, but you can also fill it out online. So that's the website and the link, and I tried it, and it did go in there, so it should work.
Welcome to you as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And then the Transportation update, I didn't have Arlen come again. He's been here a few times, and I think he's coming in August, too. So we do, as you know, you approved the contract with our new bus contractor. Monarch Bus starts August 1st, we're excited about that. They also want to come and meet the Board, so. And then K-12 Management Services, which is where Arlen Fighting is from, they're still going to be here. They actually function as our Transportation Department, because we do not have anybody in-house that's in Transportation. So that's all we have for you, unless you have any questions for us.
Any questions? Comments?
Oh, go ahead. I just had a clerical question.
Yeah. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula and Maggie. And I wanted to ask about the program of having the free breakfast. Are we planning on collecting a specific kind of data, so at the end of the year, we can see if we got somewhere, or is it just kind of like, we'll compare it to MCA scores?
So, I think that would fall to the schools. I think there could be some work in the individual schools to see, you know, how student test scores are doing, to compare. I know when I did this in another district, we looked at visits to the health office, and they decreased a lot, just because, you know, a lot of times students are going because they have a headache, they don't realize they're hungry, their stomach hurts, they don't realize they need more food. So I think that's a good way to look at it, too. And then, you know, we can track participation across the different groups of kids who are free, reduced, or paid, to see who's eating more, and, you know, compare it to how they participated in the past as well.
So they'll still be punching in their code or something?
Yes, so they'll put in their numbers, because for us to get reimbursed through the state, we need to know which category they fall under.
We'll have the counts, yeah.
Thank you.
That's great. Is there going to be, besides this announcement here, is it going to be a word of mouth, or are they going to send a letter home with the kids, or is this TBD?
I know this is new, maybe.
We haven't discussed it yet, but I'm definitely a big fan of letting people know the things that I'm doing. So, and you know, letting, keeping, keeping the word out there, so I think we'll work with Kristen and her team to let families know, and I think that's definitely a big part of it, so that they know this is available.
And then the, the application for the free and reduced lunch, that's on our website, too, if people would like to find it, can be found?
So, you can't fill it out until after July 1st.
Okay.
So, I think maybe we'll do some work, you know, when July 1st comes and the new fiscal year hits, to let families know that they can start filling it out.
So that's next Monday?
Yes. Already.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Excellent. Welcome again, thanks for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be School Board Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on Community Engagement. Who's taking the lead on that one?
That's me.
Lauren?
So, we, I put some information in your update, and the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on Community Engagement was made up of Hala, Natty, and myself. And we've been working since the committee was formed to really look at several areas of what makes up community engagement, and how do we as a Board take a look at, at community engagement. So, we were challenged with six topic areas. I'm not going to read through all of those, those were published, but I wanted to kind of present a little bit of what our, what we've came up with as a group and some of our process that we had over our meetings, and our recommendation to the Board on what's our next step in, as we look at community engagement. So, we, we did a lot of conversations amongst ourselves, we did research online, and we had conversations with school board members at about six or seven other school districts in the area, to just get an idea of what other communities and schools are doing for community engagement. The first thing that we did is we decided we needed to define community engagement, to really say for us as a Board, what does that mean? The definition that we've adopted is that community engagement is an ongoing process of two-way communication between the school board and the communities it serves. And we went a little bit further to identify those communities would be students, parents, residents, taxpayers, business owners, teachers, and staff. So really, anybody who's impacted or a part of our school community, whether they have kids that go here or not, and that's how we identified the community. So, you know, really doing some of our research, the, the role of the school board, as we've probably learned in our training, is to represent our community through policy and community engagement. So we look at that community engagement piece, and I think initially the Subcommittee was prepared to come and present to you a really robust community engagement strategy. And after some consult with Superintendent Kelly, which I appreciate, we really looked at how do we take the ideas that the Community Engagement Committee came up with, put together something that's manageable, something that we can all get behind, that we can do, you know, understanding that we're, we're at these meetings three times a month, there's other commitments and obligations that we have. We wanted to do something, and if we did it, we wanted to do it well, and we wanted to be able to represent our community well and engage with our community. And so we, we scaled back that robust community engagement plan, although I'm not going to say that you're not going to see some of that later. And wanted to say, for this first year, as we, as we come out, our recommendation from the committee would be to, to focus on this one strategy, and, and again, to see if we can do that well. And part of what comes to this is, we identified a need to meet our community where they're at. You know, we do a lot here in this room, whether it's our board meeting, our listening sessions just outside, the work sessions, we're here, and I know that many of us, all of us are out in the communities and the schools and making connections, but we wanted to establish something intentional, where we can say that this is where we're going to be, and this is what we'd like to do. So what the committee, the Subcommittee is recommending, is that we're recommending changing the structure of our listening sessions. Instead of having the listening sessions on the third Tuesday of the month at 5:00 here in this building before our work session, we are recommending that we would hold the listening sessions in other locations, specifically related to times when people are at our schools. And so we have recommended that we will hold a total of six listening sessions for the 2019-2020 academic year, where each board member would then go to two sessions during the year. And they would take place at the schools during conferences. So, once at North Park, Valley View, Highland, Columbia Academy, and High School during one of their conference nights, where it would be identified that the Board will be there, that there'll be a listening session, it'll be visible, we want everybody to wear name tags. And then we've also identified that we would like to hold a listening session at the Columbia Heights Public Library, again, recognizing that not all of our communities that we serve have students that go to, go to the schools. So we would hold one session at the public library to identify, to be able to invite any folks there as well. And so, you know, the calendar that we put together would be September, we'd meet at the library. October, we would be at conferences at Columbia Academy and Highland. In February, at North Park and Valley View, and then in March, at the high school. And we, we did that intentionally, so that we, you know, when we're at Columbia, in October, that we're in Columbia Academy, which is kind of that end of town, and Highland, which is over on this side, and then we're at North Park and Valley. So we tried to spread ourselves out, so we weren't like at the high school and Highland in the same month. So if people live near here, we also thought, you know, transportation may be a barrier to coming to listening sessions, so if we're out in those communities and spread them out a little bit, that people could come to those sessions. So that, I mean, that kind of is what our plan is for next year. The cost, part of what our mission was, our, our goals were to establish a cost. The cost would be to, for advertising, you know, to really let people know when, when the listening sessions are. As you saw in your update, in preparation for this, because the calendar is already being printed, what we did do is we removed the current listening sessions off the calendar, but the new listening sessions won't be on the calendar. Just timing doesn't, doesn't work out in that respect, but, so we'll need to get that out, you know, utilizing some of the formats that we already have, potentially, especially for that September, community-based listening session, perhaps, you know, more advertisement, local publication of the paper, that sort of thing. So there'd be some advertising costs. And then we were also tasked with establishing a measurement, a tool. How do we know if, you know, this strategy would, would do what, what we wanted to do, which is increase our, our community engagement? And we determined that really with this, it would be looking at how many people we interacted with during the listening sessions. As we know how many people have come to our listening sessions in the past, we'd be looking to see if there was an increase in participation in those listening sessions, and that would be our real first measure of construct for that. I also wanted to mention, too, I think the Subcommittee talked that we, you know, while we are an ad hoc Subcommittee, we would like to reconvene specifically to evaluate, and then, you know, I think it's something that we discuss further along down the line, as we continue to make sure that we are doing what we're, what we're needing to do in the areas of community engagement. So, that, I'm going to ask you two, our community member, committee members, to chime in if there's anything I missed or you want to add.
Sounds like you got everything. Thank you for speaking for us.
Yeah. And I was just thinking to highlight the, being at conferences doubles the parent's time. You know, they're, they're already going to come out to a conference night, so we'd be there. Or if they just had a question to ask, it could be as simple as a question, just the availability of seeing us there in their child's building, children's buildings, I think is, it says something about a willingness to be out there and engage with people, and it even, that frankly just allows for casual conversations we might have with parents who we might not otherwise interact with, because next year, my kids are all at the high school. That's where I, as a parent, will be, so it will limit my touch points around the district, so.
The only question I have, I guess, before we open it up for discussion on the recommendation is, your valuation timeframe, what are you, six months at the end of the year of all these, what is your thoughts on reconvening the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, that was something we really haven't specifically talked about as a committee, other than the fact that we should reconvene. You know, personally, I would say, I would like to just touch base again, probably mid-year, just to kind of see how the first, you know, we have September, October, you know, maybe we reconvene, you know, after... we have September, October, you know, maybe we reconvene, you know, after those to see how those were going, to see if there's anything we need to do differently for our February and March listening sessions. And then certainly reconvening at that point to really look at data participation and maybe go forward with what, you know, what the recommendation and how that worked.
Yeah, I think it would probably be a good idea to come together again before the calendar is finalized. So, you know, we're seeing that things have been working out. If we want to add another facet to it.
For the 2021 calendar.
Yeah. Before the following year's calendar, so at least we can put something on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, ultimately, our goal would be to have, you know, if we continue this process, at any point, any listening session is on the calendar. So making sure that we finalize our details in time to get them in the calendar.
Good idea. Okay. I guess I turn to Laura and Holly, Molly. Can I get your name right?
No.
Molly, sorry. Thoughts, comments on the recommendations from there? Let's just move it forward.
Yeah, let's do that. I think you guys did a great job, and I really appreciate that. I think it's what we need to do. I think that the conversation you guys had was real direct. And I think my understanding is that from the superintendent, you guys had to kind of hone in. I can appreciate that. Although I'm sure you guys have a lot more. And will we hear about that, like after we get these started? Maybe would that be a time that you guys talk about that in November too?
Yeah, I think that would be an area that we, you know, and at this point, I, and I, when I sent the information out in the update, we kind of talked, it's like, let's just really present, you know, what our mission is here, what we want you to approve, you know, and agree to as we move forward. And because we really didn't want to scare you all with what our grandiose plans were. And really looking at that, I think even for us, we were like, oh yeah, we might have bit off more than we could chew with that.
Sure.
And so I really think it's, you know, evaluating this and then seeing from our brain, I'll call it brainstorming. From our brainstorming, is there anything else that we, you know, identified that would work?
What's next? Okay.
I think the very first step though, that we wanted to focus on was going where people are.
Yep.
To begin a two-way conversation.
Perfect.
There are other things that we could do. We discussed how do we increase our visibility so people like know who we actually are, right? When, so they can ask us a question or they feel comfortable approaching us, you know? So there are things we've talked about, but I think there was wisdom in the suggestion to really just pick one thing and do it well. And you forget, we have, what, 35 meetings a year with special called meetings? And I mean, that's all, we're a high-meeting school board, so.
One thing I want to follow up on, I guess I forgot to put it in this too, that we would also like to do is we would like to do a welcome letter at the beginning of the year. So in September, we're sending out a letter that has our picture on it, you know, welcoming our students and families to a new academic year and just talking a little bit about the role of the school board and who we are. To introduce ourselves again to, and that really is going out to our school community, you know, because those are the students that we would send the letters home with. And Natty had a great idea of having a sticker or, you know.
Stapling a sticker to it, so kids want the sticker, so it gets home.
Yep.
And that's part of your initial recommendation as well?
Right.
I know, this actually sounds wonderful, but the one thing that I was looking at is there are a lot of different strategies that can be used. Really, should this be a temporary committee?
Well, I think it's open to come back after the evaluation and maybe it becomes a, I mean, there's a lot of.
I can see this as being an ongoing process that needs to be focused on. So that's, I guess that's my input, because so far, what I'm hearing, I absolutely love, especially because it's more intentional.
All right, so the recommendation that's on the table is, okay. And I am as well. I like the idea of getting out there and look forward to hearing, you know, how it works. I can't see it not going well. I mean, you're literally putting yourself in front of the people to be there, so. This comes back on as an action item then, to approve it, or are we just going to throw it on the calendar? What about for changing our listening session stuff? Is that just something we say we're going to move forward with this recommendation? We don't need to make it an action item at our next meeting? We check and see if you need to maybe bring it back, and if not, I guess at this point, if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll just plan on moving forward with getting those dates out there and advertised.
Yeah, just to be clear, like I said, except for a minute, so the letter, I mean, I think we want to do the letter, the welcome letter. Very comfortable with that. And then the listening sessions, what we'll need to do for the listening sessions is what the committee didn't identify specifically which of the conference nights. Some of them have, you know, two nights. And I felt like that would be something that, you know, as we sign up for the listening sessions, that maybe we can determine what nights those are and do that maybe in August.
Okay. Well, I can leave it to you guys to come back with the calendar and the signup stuff and move it forward. And then are you going to put a letter together?
I think we could put a letter together and then get it in the board packet. And then if you guys have feedback on that.
Perfect.
If you're comfortable with that.
The committee will take care of the letter as well.
We'll get a draft going.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your support.
No problem. All right, if there's nothing else on that, we will move on to the, our membership is coming due for MSBA, which is Minnesota School Board Association. Just want to touch on it tonight. It'll come back as an action item for approval, I think everybody's familiar with. MSBA, it looks like, just looking for my notes here on this one. And we'll talk a little bit about the MSBA. They're the ones, we use them for our policies. We use their formats or their policies when they come out. We use that as for the policy committee, use them for that. I think that's probably one of the bigger things that we use them for. The self, the school board's self-evaluation, we just utilized MSBA for that as well. We all have access to their website and the ability to reach out and ask questions, I think. I don't know, when you were working on your community engagement thing, did MSBA, is that one of your resources?
I was looking at stuff on their website about community engagement as well as neighboring communities, but, you know.
And we can certainly have a further discussion about it. I think it's a valuable membership for us. The 2019-2020 membership fee is going to be $8,462. It's based on, and it was $8,226 this past year. And we've also, in the past, the Policy Review Service, which is where we're able to get the information for updating our policies. It's $700 for the renewal on that, and last year that fee was $685. So they both have gone up a little bit. But any questions or comments about that? The balance of the total is going to be $9,162 for the renewal fee, the policy services, and then the association dues. And it isn't our budget, so.
I think for those of you who are listening at home, the policies are pretty important because they're the guiding documents to how we actually essentially govern the school. And so having people who are keeping up on current law, the little and big changes that come every year when new things get passed, they help us to keep our policies current, and we have a review cycle. Thanks, Laura. And we really rely on them to help us understand the laws. They spend a lot of time doing that. It's their specialty, so.
I didn't even think about this, but we use the, and the statute requires new school board members to go through, you know, different phases, and that's through MSBA as well, their workshops. So I think there's a lot of value to it. But unless there's additional conversation you want to have tonight, this will be coming back, I guess, August? Okay, so it'll come back in August for, as an action item. All right, speaking of action items, we will move on to our action items. The first one up is the Community Adventure Club, Mini Adventure Club fees. And all of our action items tonight have been previously brought to the board.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, we are here this evening to bring as an action item the increasing of Adventure Club and Mini Adventures fees. This will take place with the start of the next school year. And our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. You'll hear our core values of community, collaboration, and integrity in this presentation. With Mini Adventures Child Care Program, I wanted to just share with you again the comparison of the fees from this current year to next year. It is approximately an 8% fee increase due to increased staffing costs and also the cost of food because we do provide with Mini Adventures breakfast and lunch. So that's why it is an 8% increase approximately. And then for Adventure Club, it's approximately a 5% increase, and that's due to staffing costs. The school release day, which is a 12-hour day, is a bit more than 5%, and that's because we were underfunded with that. And we have increased staff to have a smaller ratio of about 1 to 10 for our students, between our students and our staff. And so again, we went over this as an info item, all that the fees include. And tonight, the governance question before you is determining if you do approve the increased fee schedule for the 2019-2020 Mini Adventures and Adventure Club program, which is our childcare program. And again, this program must be self-sufficient. It can only cover the costs through the fees. Thank you.
Okay, start with the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Go to Molly. Discussion, discussion questions. Laura?
I just have one question. We're still competitive with our neighboring districts.
Yes, we always ensure that that is the case.
Okay, and there are still scholarship opportunities as well?
Yes, yep, there's the pathways one, pathways two, and also county assistance for our Mini Adventures program. And approximately half of our participants are receiving scholarships through one of those programs. And then with Adventure Club, there is county assistance. So yes, there are options, and many of our families are utilizing those options. And they work with our managers to process all of that paperwork. So it's quite easy for families. They work with our staff for that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm just going to reiterate with Laura that I also kind of looked into that too, and these rates are in line or better than what the average is in this area, so.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, here is no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long-term facility maintenance plan.
Okay, good evening, Chair Larkin, school board members. Brian and I were here on June 11th, and we went over the long-term facility maintenance plan for Columbia Heights Schools. And Brian has that spreadsheet up on the overhead. And we need to approve our 10-year plan in order to receive long-term facility maintenance funding from the MDE. So we get about $1.4 million a year in this area, and we put down, it's pretty close to $1.4 every year. The first year it was a little bit, we're going to double up next year, but, and we went over this last time and explained the projects. But if you have any other questions, we would ask you to approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan for our district.
Okay, we'll start with the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Maureen?
Second.
Natty? And open it up for discussion. Any no questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Northeast Metro.
Okay, so Chair Larkin, members of the board, we have the same thing for Northeast Metro 916. So they have a long-term facility maintenance plan, and the total is approximately $144,000. And they have to get a resolution passed by each of their member districts in order to levy that. And it goes on to our levy that we'll be working on this fall. So our amount, our share of that $144,000 is $9,035.86. And it's not on this resolution, but it was on the attached pages. So this is the resolution that we need to approve for Northeast Metro 916.
Okay, and for clarification, Dawn, is this 916's resolution, and we're just approving the long-term levy? It's an action item for us, it's not a resolution? It needs to be the resolution, it has to be read? Sorry, guys. Yeah, I got it. I just didn't, I was just thinking that it was their resolution. All right, so this will be a resolution. We'll start with the motion, move it forward a second, and then I'll read the resolution.
So moved.
Maureen?
Second.
Molly? All right. Pursuant to due call notice thereof, school board meeting of school board independent school district 13 was held on June 25th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose and part of approving the Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District, number 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing inclusion of a proportionate share of the intermediate district's long-term facility maintenance projects and the district's application for long-term maintenance. We had Member Mueller introduce the following resolution. Resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District, number 916's long-term facility maintenance program budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects and the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. The school board of Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District, number 916, has approved a long-term facility maintenance budget for facilities for the 2020-2021 school year, paid 2020 levy in the amount of $1,044,700. The various components of this program budget are attached as Exhibit A heretofore and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 595, Subdivision 3, as amended, provides that if an intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school district's member school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each school district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate of where half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district. And half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of ADM utilized by the district to the total ADM utilization. You did all the math on that, right?
Yep.
Okay. The inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for fiscal year 2021 is hereby approved, subject to approval of the Commissioner of Minnesota Department of Education. Upon receipt of the proportionate share of long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the immediate, intermediate school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds. That's it. Yep, and then the clerk has to sign something. Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on that? Hearing none. There's a roll call, vote if you would, please, Laura.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. And last but not least, our workers' compensation insurance renewal.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, I brought to you last time as an information item the 2020 workers' comp renewal. And I'm asking you to approve that renewal for the district's workers' comp insurance carrier. It's United Heartland, and that's who we currently have. And it was, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but.
Start with the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Maureen? Questions?
I think just to comment, as Director said, that this was presented at our last meeting, and you had quite the detailed presentation on the work comp and what our rate is and the increased percentage. So thank you for putting together such thorough information.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. You were busy tonight.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything for board topics today?
Jan Marie? This weekend, Housat Park is the center of a lot of activity.
I think that all gets fired up on Wednesday, tomorrow.
I think they're already setting up. I think it's already busy down there, right?
There's also the community picnic at Housat on Thursday of this week.
Yes.
At the splash pad like last year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, in that general area.
Actually, I do have a board topic, and I actually forgot. I attended a board retreat with 916 last week as well. And one of the things we were doing as a board was talking about equity and doing some work on equity at the board level there. I found it to be very insightful, inspiring, useful, and applicable. I mean, even more so. And I'm suggesting that maybe we might want to look in the future as maybe that might be something that we would wish to do as a board. be something that we would wish to do as a board, just like we did the self-evaluation, but have it be board work.
Who is it done through?
This particular presentation was actually put on at 916 by their staffing.
916?
Yes.
By their staff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I hope you have some information on it, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to think, get a bit more of that and maybe we can, we can look at doing, you know, we received a book as well, we might want to do it as a book study or we might want to just, you know, kind of, you know, if the board, the thing I found valuable about it is having the, the board take on all of our policy, look at our policy and our governance with, with an equity lens. And I think that this will be a valuable tool for us to, to be able to do that.
Okay, cool. Like I said, if you have something specific, maybe it's happy to get it off to us and we can.
Yes, I do believe that they are doing a free, a free class in July, but there were only 20 places that were open. So I'm going to have to find out whether or not there's any, if anybody wanted to participate, anybody could participate in that.
That's awesome. Yeah. I love the book recommendations too, so it's fun to be able to not sit at the table and think about it, you know, independently. I mean, not that we're not thinking independently, but just on my own when I have time to ruminate and we're not eyeing and naying and, you know.
Anyone else, board topics? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:51.